Good evening. We welcome you to the Provo Municipal Council meeting tonight. It is Tuesday, May twentieth at five thirty P M. We'll begin by conducting a roll call, starting with Counselor McKay.
Catrice McKay.
George Handley.
Becky Bogdan.
Gary Garrett.
Rachel Whipple.
Gray Christianson.
And we welcome also Mayor Kafusi, who has joined us. Counselor Hoben is excused. He's traveling on business. He may join us at some part virtually. We'll begin this evening with an invocation that will be offered by Bridger Lee Jensen. Afterwards, we'll be led in the pledge of allegiance by Counselor Handley.
Our dear heavenly mother and father, we come before you with gratitude in our hearts for the city, for its people, and for those who lead and serve with devotion. We ask for your presence to guide us in this meeting. Bless these leaders with wisdom, compassion, and clarity, and help us to see one another with understanding, to listen with kindness, and to act in peace. We thank you for the opportunity to gather in the spirit of community and in service and for Provo City in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Handley, and thank you, Bridger. First on the agenda, we have a presentation by America Fusi and Scott Bunker, Director of Energy, who will recognize the Provo City Employee of the Month for the month of May. Is her mic on? Is the mic on at the podium? Okay. Try the other one, Mayor. Sorry about that. It was on a minute ago.
Oh, there we go. That's fabulous. Okay. It's a privilege to stand before you today and recognize an exceptional employee whose dedication, professionalism, and service have made a meaningful and lasting impact on our community. While one Provo is built on the strength of collaboration and teamwork, it's also important to highlight the remarkable contributions that individuals make in their roles each day. So this evening, I'm pleased to invite our Energy Director Scott Bunker to present the May twenty twenty five Employee of the Month Award to an outstanding member of our Provo team.
Thank you, councilors. We're grateful to be here tonight. I'm especially, especially, is that even a word? I'm especially excited for this opportunity and for this employee. Grateful for this opportunity to recognize Charlie Little as our Employee of the Month. She is a tremendous employee and one who has done so many things for us. Charlie started working at Provo Power about eight years ago. She previously worked for the state of Utah, and we were grateful and fortunate to be able to steal her away from them. Matter of fact, I remember her interview process and being on the interview team with her. And immediately after her interview, in our post-interview discussion, the comment was made, we need to hire her. She's perfect for us. And we knew quickly that Charlie was the one that we wanted to hire, and we have never looked back or regretted one moment since. She is that quality and that good of an employee in every way. Charlie is incredibly talented. As you know, you've met with her many times. She's very smart. She's amazingly affable with all that we give her around the office. We tease her periodically. But we have been faced with some sizable challenges in the past nine months, as many of you know. And every problem or concern that has arisen, Charlie has handled it stealthily, quickly, and efficiently as they arise. And her skill set has made it seem simple to all of us that work around her. But, you know, we know that behind all of that amazing skill set, there was a lot of work, time, and research that went into her efforts to solve those incredible problems. In many instances, when problems arise, Charlie is hyper-focused to resolve the problem, very much so. With one issue recently, a concern was raised at a council meeting. We were sitting right over here that night. And I kind of laughed because I remember this vividly. This happened not too long ago. But we were sitting right over there that night, and after the meeting went over, we talked about the problem. We went back to the office and I split. I headed home. And unbeknownst to me, Charlie continued to stay and work at the office. And a short line, short time later, she found the problem, figured out the resolution for it, fixed it, and then texted me and let me know she was done and on her way home. That's the kind of employee that Charlie is, and she is one of a kind, and she not only does what she says she is, but she is an amazing problem solver. I did want to share one quote from one of our employees because I thought it perfectly embodies who Charlie is. This employee says, and I can't say it better than this employee said, the employee said, Charlie is bomb dot com. Charlie consistently leads by example. She has an ability to balance high expectations with understanding and support. This creates an environment where I feel valued, motivated, and empowered to do my best. For me, what sets Charlie apart is not just her professionalism, but her authenticity. She is a manager who listens, encourages, and is someone I can rely on and trust. I'm grateful and very fortunate to have Charlie as a leader and colleague who continues to strengthen our team on a daily basis. Charlie is engaged to her fiancee, Dave Zirce, who is here tonight. We're grateful to have him here. And her parents are also joining us, Howard and Catherine Little. We are grateful to have them here as well. Charlie and Dave, her fiancee, obviously are engaged, and he is a huge supporter of hers. And she's a huge supporter of him, and she loves his daughter Mia. And they're looking forward, this later this year, to their destination wedding. And we couldn't be happier for them. So please join me, councilors, if you would, in recognizing Charlie Little for being such an incredible part of our Provo Power family. Thank you.
We can't get big footprints in there. So it's for Charlie right in the middle, and she's the rock star, and then you and I all gone.
Dave and parents, can you come up and join us? Is that all right?
Whatever. It's your show. Whatever you want. You're the boss.
They're kind of the reason she's here, so.
And I hear you down at the table. Yeah.
Where are we going? Can't stop talking.
Hey, look at my baby first. Willia? Oh, this is right. And Becky?
Thank you, Mayor and Scott, and congratulations again, Charlie, on your service. Next, we will begin our period of public comment. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following the presentation. At this time, up to fifteen minutes have been set aside for open public comment, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda, but are limited to topics regarding municipal business or within municipal council purview. Persons wishing to speak during this time will be able to approach the podium. Each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. If there are any who have joined the meeting by Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature on your computer. So we would invite any who would like to make public comment to approach the podium at this time. You have two minutes. Welcome.
Hello, I'm John. I live in Provo. I'd like to talk about one of the people that has benefited from my sober living. Greg was born into a poor Hispanic family with nine children. As an infant in the hospital, he was dropped, causing him to be disabled. Several years ago, Greg's dad fled the country and the law due to essay misconduct with a minor. I assume that Greg himself was a victim to the same egregious crimes of his father because he did not break the chain and acted out very inappropriately with an innocent young girl. I imagine if you read that old police report, you would not feel one bit sorry that Greg ended up getting thirty years in prison with the general public where he was endlessly tortured and bullied. I first learned about Greg from his brother, who was a friend of mine from church. He pleaded to have Greg move in to my home, but I refused. However, after multiple promptings that I tried to ignore, I had three very unlikely coincidences that made it all too obvious as to what I was being instructed to do. Since living in my home, he has not used any of the drugs that he tested positive for while he was in prison. However, he is still far from the ideal roommate. He cannot make a sandwich. He cannot shower well. He frequently smells bad. He steals food. He makes it embarrassing for me to have guests at my house and legally impossible for me to have children at my house. If the citizens of Provo do not want a felon like Greg living in their neighborhood, albeit safely locked out of their homes, I don't blame them. I did not want Greg living inside my home. However, while Greg may be the pariah to everybody else, he is still obviously a loved child of God. And as we have learned from Jeffrey R. Holland, doing the right thing as a Christian is comforting, but it is often not comfortable.
Thank you, John.
Anderson, and I am from Mapleton. I am a Utah native, a wife, a mother of four boys, and someone currently walking a sacred healing path, one that has changed not only the way I see the world, but how I live within it. I come to you today as a sincere member of the religion of singularism, where psilocybin is not a drug, it is a sacrament. Like many others who walk this path, I don't use it to escape. I use it to return to truth, to peace, and to the divine within me. When I was diagnosed with breast cancer last fall, my world turned upside down. It forced me to slow down, to listen deeply, and to reexamine every layer of my life, my beliefs, my relationships, and the connections I had to my body and spirit. In that vulnerable space, sacred psilocybin ceremonies became one of the most profound spiritual tools in my healing. They didn't replace anything. They restored something. This medicine helped me reconnect to the divine, not as something outside of me, but as something alive within me. It helped me shift out of chronic fear and anxiety. It calmed my nervous system and gave me the clarity and strength to face what I was going through with courage, trust, and grace. It helped me heal, not just physically, but emotionally and spiritually. These ceremonies reminded me that I am not broken, that I am love, that I am a healer, not just for myself, but as a mirror for others to see their own strength, their own wholeness, and their own sacred light. My ceremonies are not recreational. They are filled with intention, reverence, and reflection. Each one is a communion, a returning home to the divine within me. That's why this is sacred to me. That's why this is my religion. Singularism provides a structure of reverence, accountability, and spiritual integrity. The spiritual standard that we're speaking about today isn't just about access. It's about safety. It's about community. It's about giving people the chance to heal in a legal, respectful, and spiritually supported environment with trained and compassionate facilitators. And I truly believe this medicine can support others in the cancer community, regardless of the healing path they choose, whether someone is pursuing conventional treatment.
Thank you, Allison.
Hello, council members. My name is Ryan Hightower. I'm a software engineer and director at a local tech company. I don't smoke. I don't drink. I rarely use caffeine, but I use psilocybin mushrooms in a sacred container at Singularism. I first came across these in two thousand and fifteen when I was listening to a podcast. I heard two doctors talking about a fantastic study they were doing. And it turned out that these psilocybin mushrooms, as well as other psychedelic substances, had incredible healing opportunities and potential. In one such study, eighty-five percent of participants showed significant improvement after just one dose. Up to sixty percent had, were in complete remission of their symptoms up to a year later. This wasn't just treating symptoms. This was genuine healing. My first encounter, opportunity to participate in a psilocybin session happened in two thousand and twenty-three, just two years ago. I was at a low point in my life. I was struggling financially. My marriage was in a difficult place. And through a miraculous set of events, I was gifted this opportunity. Guided by an experienced facilitator and following the protocols that I had found in the John Hopkins Medical Studies, I had what I can only describe as the most sacred and profound experience of my life. Tears of sadness turned to tears of joy. Anchor and bitterness turned to love and forgiveness. Fear turned into hope, and this happened in one day. I experienced a change in me that I cannot describe in words. But I hope that you will support our religious freedom to worship the almighty God according to the dictates of our own.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat your city of residence?
Vineyard.
Vineyard. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jenna, and I'm from Riverton. In December twenty twenty-three, I came to Singularism, seeking something I couldn't quite name, a sense of clarity, healing, maybe even purpose. And through the ceremonies, I was able to release burdens I'd been carrying for years, trauma, shame, fear, and step into a deeper sense of peace and truth. It wasn't just about the medicine. It was the intention, the integrity of the facilitators, and the sacred container they created that made the experience safe and profound. One of the most impactful moments for me was the first time I was truly introduced to my fear. Not just the day-to-day anxieties of life, but a deeper, more existential fear I hadn't even known I was carrying. I'd wallpapered over it with busyness, achievement, and distractions so effectively I didn't even recognize it was there. But in the quiet and sacred space of the ceremony, I couldn't avoid it anymore. And yet I wasn't overwhelmed. Because the container was so safe, I was able to sit with her, this fear. I felt her in my body. I asked her why she was there. I listened. And I learned how to let her move through me instead of trying to fight or numb her. That one encounter changed my relationship with fear entirely. Since that journey, I've been able to recognize and process my fears with far more grace and presence. It's caused a radical shift in both my emotional and my spiritual health. What Singularism offers is not a party or escape. It's a return, a return to self, to spirit, to the kind of inner knowing our culture so often neglects. And for me, that return has changed everything. Beyond my personal experience, I've seen the ripple effects in our community. People reconnecting with their families, finding sobriety, healing grief, rediscovering purpose. I've watched people who come in broken walk out with a renewed sense of dignity and direction. Singularism is cultivating a healthier, more grounded, more compassionate community. It's a powerful reminder that when individuals heal, communities heal too. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. And I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this at the beginning, for our record, your first and last name.
I'm Viker.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, council members and Mayor. My name is Bridger Lee Jensen, and I'm here on behalf of Singularism as its founder. First, thank you, and I want to sincerely recognize your service to the city. I've sat actually in your seats before for four years when I was the youth council member and then became the mayor of Provo City Youth Council long ago when it was in the other building. I went to Edgemont Elementary after attending Temp Views Preschool. Then I went to Wasatch, and then I went to Dixon. Then I went to Provo High. And then I went to BYU after serving in LDS mission. I am as Provonian as anybody. I founded this in Provo after a lot of people told me to go to San Francisco or Portland or someplace that would be more accepting of me. I thought, no, this is my home and my sincerely founded religion. I don't know why I'd have to leave to practice. Today, I want to say we are helping a lot of people. We are doing so safely. We are doing so effectively. We are doing so, I believe, with the help of our Almighty. We do so with the protection of the Constitution, and we did so right. No, not all of you sat on the board when I originally wrote letters to the board and the council and invited you to come on tours. And I want to reiterate that today. Wanted to invite you all to come and to see what we do, to come on a tour anytime. Each of you can call me. You have my number for my emails, and I'd give it to you now publicly. We are extremely transparent. It's our defense. Our defense is opening up ourselves to you. We would love to see you come in, come for a visit.
Thank you, Bridger.
Hi, my name is Brandy Lee, and I live in Caseville, but I work in Provo. I come before you today not only as someone who loves this community, but as someone who is alive today because of sacred medicine. A few years ago, my world fell apart. I lost my father unexpectedly. I lost my brother to suicide. And my marriage ended all within a short year and a half period. The grief and trauma were unbearable. I spiraled into a dark place where nothing seemed to help. I was in and out of hospitals, consumed by pain and truthfully contemplating ending my own life. I tried everything, therapy, medication, spiritual practices, but nothing touched the deep despair I was in until an trusted friend introduced me to Bridger, the founder of Singularism. Through him, I was offered the opportunity to experience guided psilocybin therapy. Those sessions were nothing short of life-saving. It opened a door I did not know existed, a door to deep healing, to spiritual reconnection, to clarity and hope. It didn't erase my grief, but it gave me the tools to live with it, grow from it, and move forward with a sense of purpose. Today, I not only work at Singularism, but I facilitate the sacred medicine for others. I have found a path not just to healing, but to service. I have seen firsthand how the work transforms lives. Psilocybin therapy isn't about escaping reality. It's about meeting it with courage, insight, and compassion. It's about coming back to yourself and becoming the pure version of who you are without your limiting beliefs and traumas. We are now needing to defend what we know to be sacred, ethical, and necessary. We are not criminals. We are healers, guides, and survivors. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Is there anyone else here who would wish to make public comment at this time? Okay, thank you. We'll close public comment then and move to the next item on our agenda, which is a resolution approving a mayoral board appointment presented to us by Mayor Kafusi.
Chair Garrett and Vice Chair Whipple and members of the municipal council. I'm recommending the following reappointment to the airport board as indicated below and submit it for the council's advice and consent. Mario Marquitas, I am recommending Mario be reappointed to a one-year term on the airport board ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Any questions for Mayor Kafusi? If there are no questions, I'll ask for a vote. If there are no questions, I'll ask for a vote on this proposed mayoral appointment. Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Absolutely.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
And Counselor Garrett, yes. Has Counselor Hoban joined us online? The resolution passes by a vote of six-zero. Thank you, mayor. Next, we have an ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property generally located at thirty-one eighty-five West, five fifty South. From the agricultural A-one-five zone to the airport industrial AI zone in the Provo Bay neighborhood, this will be presented to us by planning supervisor Aaron Arndmar. Hello, Aaron.
Thank you. Thank you, council. So we spoke about this today in study meeting a little bit. Uh, in front of you is a, a series of maps, the, just an aerial of the property. Uh, the current zoning map in the middle, you could see the airport industrial to the east and the south where a, uh, identical, thank you, where identical product is, uh, built and is being, uh, leased and used. Uh, and then the general plan map, which is all one color because all of this is, uh, within the airport-related activity, uh, designation of the general plan. Uh, so the proposal is this, it's to, uh, take this, uh, existing home, uh, remove it from the property and then install, uh, additional office warehouse spec spaces, uh, under the airport industrial zone. Uh, so the concept plan there shows how that would look, uh, and how it ties into the existing site with parking and access. Uh, this property is, like I said, uh, general plan for this use. Um, it's matching the uses adjacent to it. It's on a, a road five fifty South that is essentially a dead end to the airport property. Um, staff finds this a, a good use for the property and is happy to recommend approval to the city council.
Great, thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? Is the applicant here? Would you like to come forward and add any comment or respond to any questions? Anything you'd like to add?
No, no, it's, I own the two of the three in front of it. It's, it's being annexed into that. There are flex warehouse spaces. They're all, they're all rented. Um, I have interest in selling half of this one if, if it goes through, uh, they're all online retailers, come in China, Vietnam boxes, go out in Amazon boxes type thing. They're in the planning commission, there was uh, something I clarified, they'll, they'll look the same in the HOA bylaws. We don't rent to cabinet shops, guys like me in construction, they're, they're all most, they're all online retailers down there now, Binky Bros, Bella Lash, Ironic Metals, uh, that kind of stuff. So they'll look just like this, it'll be part. We had to annex it onto part of the original land for setbacks and parking and that, but what you see is what you get down there, so.
And I'm sorry, sir, I forgot to ask your name.
Joel Pilling, and I live in Provo.
Joel, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You got any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Pilling? All right, thank you, Joel.
It's a nice looking project. I mean, it's classic, it, it, it looks nice, so.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. This item is open for public comment if there are any here who would like to speak to it, they can approach the podium. If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to council for discussion. Any comments, questions, or discussion from council members? Counselor Whipple?
So I ride my bike down by here a lot, so I get to, to see the property, and I just want to say that it's always completely well-kept. Like you have lovely buildings, the grounds are maintained and everything, and so I'm really happy that you have this chance to expand. I love seeing good people who are investing in the community and making it like more, more useful and more beautiful for everyone else around us. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then we'll call for a vote, uh, beginning with Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes, and Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Great, that item passes by a vote of six-zero. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Pilling. Next, we have an ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property generally located at two thousand North Canyon Road from one family residential R-one-eight to one family residential R-one-six. This is in the Pleasant View neighborhood and will be presented to us by one of our planners, Nancy Robinson.
So the applicant is requesting, um, permission from the city council to change the zoning from R-one-six.
Nancy, is that mic on? Maybe switch to the other. That one is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the applicant is asking permission from the city council to rezon the area from an R-one-eight to an R-one-six to be able to create nineteen additional, um, building lots at basically the same elevation as Canyon Road. Staff believes that this is a reasonable option for the development of this land. Um, by reducing the elevation of the hillside and creating these new lots, utilities can be extended from the parcels to the west and across Canyon Road, which is the preferable option for, uh, the Public Works Department. Um, Provo needs more single-family lots, and staff believes that these new lots in this neighborhood would be a benefit to the area. The proposed subdivision would have direct access onto Canyon Road, a city collector road, so new trips generated by the subdivision would not impact an existing neighborhood. And, um, yeah, staff just recommends approval. There's any questions that you have for me?
Thank you, Nancy. Any questions for Nancy? Nancy, if you could just speak to the geotechnical work that has been done up to this point and what additional work might be required before a permit is issued?
Sure, and I will do the best that I can not being an engineer. Um, but as far as I understand, they have, um, turned in a geotechnical report that, um, our city engineers have reviewed that and believe that it is very stable soil, um, and that by taking the hill, uh, decreasing that elevation right at the front, um, would not be problematic for any of the other surrounding properties. Um, you can see in this, uh, graph just a side, uh, section view of where the hill exists now and how it would exist, um, once the lots are being created.
Counselor McKay?
Do we know how many, okay, so there's homes up on the top from their boundary line? How many feet before the mountain will be cut? Does that make sense?
Yes, and I don't know the answer to that. Um, and it's just important to know that right now it's just the rezon, and so our, um, engineers will still have, uh, more opportunities to double-check all those, um, measurements and things that need to be required for keeping everybody safe.
It doesn't come to us again though, right?
No.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Uh, yes, Counselor Christensen?
There was also, uh, questions around the water canal and some of those issues. Uh, how are those being addressed?
Um, they, the applicant knows that those issues exist and they would be responsible for, um, either piping them or, or rerouting it, however, um, those entities feel is the best way, the canal company or Provo, um, Engineering Public Works.
Okay, so do they make, does the applicant make a recommendation to the city and then the city approves it, the city oversees it, or how does that work?
So for the canal company, I think they do their own, um, engineering and they look over, uh, what they want to have done to protect that irrigation water. And, um, so everything would have to be approved through them, and then Public Works would be just working with the other grading, um, issues.
Okay, so it's the canal company that
Yeah.
makes the decision about whether that's acceptable or not?
Yeah. Or and how, and how it just needs to be remedied, um, how, how it would best be um, taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Let's, let's invite the developer forward, Mr. Tyson Reynolds. And, um, anything you'd like to add, Mr. Reynolds, and be available to any questions?
Sure. Um, to answer the last question is the canal company, where this is showing is the canal where it comes into our property, it'll run down our, the street, come down towards North Canyon and turn back s- north and connect basically where it is currently. Likewise, we want pressurized irrigation to each of the lots so that they can likewise water and they have sufficient water shares to give, uh, as part of the homeowner acquisition, as they'll have water shares associated with that canal. So yes, obviously, we'd be waiting based on this for approval from the design, but based on what we have, that's what we understand is their desire as from the canal company. The only reason for a requested zone change is even zone what it is on a normal flat lot, we'd be able to get approximately twenty-one homes in there at R-one-eight with the existing acreage. But due to the contours of the ground and trying to make it, uh, a slightly pleasing, the lot shape and size, uh, is what is the desire to change from R-one-six or to R-one-eight to R-one-six. We're not, uh, like I say, normal lot thing, we'd be able to get over twenty lots at the current zoning, but due to the challenges associated with grade is what's cultivating the desire to one, R-one-six. Um, I don't know if there was other questions that were unanswered?
Other questions for Mr. Reynolds? Counselor McKay?
Um, will this have an HOA?
Yes.
Okay, um, is there any plan, are you planning to sell all of the homes? Okay, wha- what about homeowner occupancy?
All right, I guess I'm not following homeowner occupancy, they're going to be sold as our single-family homes.
Yeah, uh, well, so what we've been doing lately to keep investors out is, um, that they have, we, within the covenants of the HOA, either they have a, an, in the covenants that there can't be rentals, or that whoever buys it has to live in it for the first year before it can be a rental, kind of keeping just institutional investors out of the single-family home market.
I I know we ran into some challenges associated with apartments or multifamily associated with such. I know if I was buying a home, I would definitely not want a rental restriction or any other kind of restriction associated with a single-family residence. I understand it in a condo setting or apartment setting. Um, so I haven't given any credence to such, and I know I wouldn't want burden on my title, uh, those kind of recommendate, or those kind of challenges that could preclude possibly families or whatever else living in a home like that. So I think the price point and less, uh, would negate ability to do that because these are going to be fairly expensive homes due to the cost of the land as well as what we're doing. And I'm, my thinking is, uh, that will mitigate largely, uh, any issues associated with, with.
That's good. What is the price point, you think?
Price point based on the, what we're getting now is going to be about a million.
Okay. All right, I'm not worried about it, thank you.
Mr. Reynolds, are you, are you selling, will you be marketing and selling the lots or building the homes and selling the homes?
I'm going to be building probably the majority of them and then selling them. Um, due to the cost of them and the ground and everything else, I think we're going to have to build the product in order to be able to come out okay on them, but I am open to somebody that, uh, maybe wanting a specific lot and want their own home plan and home builder on it.
Okay.
I would look at that.
Sure, okay. Other questions? Yes, ma- uh, Counselor Whipple?
This came up a little bit earlier in the work meeting, but this little tiny, um, two thousand square feet that suggests to the left of the first hammerhead, what's happening with that?
I'm looking as at some kind of an amenity for the area, whether it be a playset, whether it be a gazebo, uh, for picnic area. Uh, I'm looking at for a park amenity or a, uh, HOA amenity.
Yeah, something maintained by the HOA.
Yes.
And that sounds like that would be a perfect buffer between the little development and the apartment complex, so I, I, I just curious on your plan, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. This item is also open for public comment. If there are any here who would like to speak, they can approach the podium at this time. Remind us of your name and city of residence.
Good evening, uh, Matt Wheelwright, Chair of District One, uh, so representing the, so I think I need three minutes, representing the district that were talked about. Um, is it possible to put the grade plan back up there, the second slide that was just there? Um, I think generally the neighbors are very happy. In fact, I would like to commend the developer for still being here. Uh, there have been a few renditions, right? And so, uh, happy that the, I think I'm appropriately speaking from the neighbors, they're happy with the, the intent of the plan. And so the zone change, I think there's actually excitement about, appropriate excitement about what's happening. Um, there is some anxiety, uh, at the meeting, there was significant anxiety because we hadn't seen the grading plan that was just up on the screen. Um, I think when we saw it at the planning commission, a lot of that anxiety went way down because it's dramatically different than the large retaining wall and some of the other strategies that were proposed previously. So having seen the grading plan, I think, we didn't have another meeting, but I think the, the the level of anxiety went way down, but there's still a concern about, um, I know in previous renditions, we were asking for bonds or some kind of bonding for landscape and if anything ever happened to that hillside, if, if there was a problem with the, uh, I think there's a garage and a shed and, you know, the house is on the uphill side. Um, so I think some of that is still a concern, but generally this is a good plan. I think they're in favor. Um, it's a lot of progress from where we've been previously, so just wanted to relay kind of that sentiment from that meeting, so thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any others?
Evening, council. Uh, Paul Evans in the Pleasant View neighborhood. Um, this is a piece of property that has made a great transition from some early ideas to where we are now, and particularly the idea of being able to have multiple single-family lots, and that's the direction that, uh, that at least I personally appreciate the council, I know the neighborhood is also for keeping that as a focus of, of trying to increase residential lots, uh, throughout Provo City and and this is a good place for that to occur. Um, in the last, uh, two years, homes that have sold in the Pleasant View neighborhood have sold to a homeowner who then they deed the property to their, uh, student, um, child. And that student child then becomes homeowner of record for the property. And then with an ADU in the basement or elsewhere, it turns in then to a multi-level apartment complex with three students above, you know, the student who's the owner plus, uh, friends uh, living in one place and then renting out the other component to, uh, individuals. So we still have that as a risk, uh, for these properties. We've had other places in Provo. We have multiple homes altogether, and they haven't always gone in the direction of homeowner occupancy long-term. And, uh, so that's, just point out that's a risk for the long-term, but again, Mr. Reynolds has been a great developer, he's still here, he's got resiliency, and, uh, and that's a good thing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any other public comments? If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item to council for discussion. Counselors, comments, questions, input, Counselor McKay?
Um, I would agree to the developer. Um, I think it's great you're doing high-end homes, I think it's great they're a single family, I think it's great the location they're at, and I'm excited, they'll sell and do really well, and they're definitely needed.
Any other counselor comment? If not, we'll call for a vote. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
And Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Thank you, this item passes by a unanimous vote of six-zero. If there's no objection, we'll now adjourn the municipal council by unanimous consent. Thanks to all who have joined us tonight.
Recording stopped.